Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to our La Salle City Council meeting dated July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. At this time, I'd like to call our meeting order. What do you think? Council members, you were all present with your packets electronically and physical form over the weekend. Hope you had time to look it over, reach out with any questions. This time, I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. So moved. Councilman Nelson, thank you for seconding that. Any other discussion? Any other comments? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to consent agenda, all items on consent agenda are considered routine, have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of meeting. These items will be enacted in one motion or there will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member of citizens so requests. The item won't be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. Mr. Roby, you want to give us a little summary of these?
I would thank Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's smaller on the screen tonight owing to all the giant days items, but it's on your, in your packet as well. On tonight's consent agenda, there are a number of items, the first of which is approval of the city council minutes from the June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Second is approval of disbursements through today. Included in those disbursements are seven items over twenty-five thousand dollars. The first is to La Salle County Highway Department, the twenty twenty-five street utility project payment application number two, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty cents. Second to MMPA, Carababon Energy, for our June twenty twenty-five purchase power, totaling seven hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. Third to the Minnesota Public Facilities, water treatment facility debt service, the Henderson share, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents. Fourth to Castro John Incorporated, for the North Forest Street Electrical Distribution Improvements Project Pay Application Number One, fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Next to Minnesota Department of Revenue, City Sales Tax for June twenty twenty-five, totaling fifty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Next to Neo Water Treatment LLC, for our wastewater material, FX three hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty cents. And finally, to Waste Management, June twenty twenty-five, Refu Services, twenty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-six cents. Item C is approval of the Giant Days Street Closure Application for South Park Lane. Item D, approval of Giant Days Fireworks Permit Application. Item E, approved Giant Days Temporary On Sale Liquor License. Item F, approved Giant Days Lawful Gambling Permit Application. Item G, approved Giant Days Parade Permit. Item H, approved the La Salle Chamber of Commerce Street Closure Application for Main Street for this coming Friday. Item I, approved SAS Farms A Kind Request for the Use of Public Parking Lot. Item J, approval of payment application number one, the North Forest Street Electrical Distribution Improvements Project. And item K, approved payment application number two, the twenty twenty-five street utility improvements project.
Thank you, Mr. Roby. Anybody having questions regarding these consent agenda items? If not, I'll entertain a motion to pass tonight's consent agenda. So thank you, council. Councilmember Williams, council member Sullivan, seconded. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to public comment, I know there's some people here to speak specifically to item seven B, but I'm going to read the public comment. Expectations at this time, if I may, public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons wishing to make a comment must sign up in advance of the meeting and she provided and identify themselves by being the name and address. So with that said, we just want to confirm that you folks are here for this agenda, item seven B, the expanded construction hours. Is it Tammy Arnold? Were you here to speak to that?
No, I'm talking to him.
Yes, yes. Okay, very good. And Paul?
Yeah.
Same? Okay. So we'll come back to you. All right. That said, the stakes is on to city ministerial update. Mr. Roby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Twenty twenty-five street utility improvements project and electric undergrounding project continue to make progress. I remind you, for those who have not signed up already, you may sign up for weekly construction updates from the construction team. And a bi-monthly reminder to those who have not signed up for Smart Hub for your electric and water utilities to please do so. We have had some people, I'm going to take credit for it, although I don't think I deserve it, who have signed up recently for Smart Hub. So please continue to do that. It will save you money in the long term. We'll be discussing the Zion Church Utility Improvements Project coming up here shortly, but we've been working with engineering team and church leadership on that project last several months. And excited to take it to the next step after tonight. Planning Commission met last Thursday. I'll let council members later provide an update on that. We did have a transition meeting today with several council members and attendants. We should learn about that later if they want. Personal Budget Committee met just before this meeting to discuss the twenty twenty-six general fund budget. This week, we'll be kicking off union negotiations with our LELS, Law Department of Labor Services, or the union that covers our police officers and police sergeants. So that's later this week. Their contract is up at the end of calendar twenty twenty-five. Just a reminder to everyone and an invitation to everyone that the Chamber of Commerce's Summer in the Valley event is this Friday downtown on the one hundred block South Main Street, Festival Street. Six P M. To ten P M. There's music, food, activities, I don't know, there's all kinds of stuff. So last several years, the chambers run this event, and they've done this three separate events throughout the summer. They pulled all the resources together for one big thing event this Friday. So we're hoping for good weather and hoping to see a good crowd downtown. Next, our tech met last week, and I believe one of the things that was discussed was an update on the DNR outdoor grant. So council will recall, the city applied for two different grants from Minnesota DNR for improvements to outdoor recreation, one at Mayo Park and one at Legion Park. We did hear early last week or late the week before that the DNR did award the city for Legion Park improvements, which is great. It's highly competitive. There are some cities that apply, and you're here, never get it. Just as a reminder, the proposed plan for that grant award is the addition of more trails in Major Park to connect the north and the south loops. A, including an ice skating loop in the middle of the park, the addition of light poles, benches, a concrete patio, extend the existing shelter, drainage improvements, and native plantings. So what we're waiting for right now from the DNR is the grant agreement. When that grant agreement comes back, we'll bring that to city council for consideration. Next meeting is July twenty-eighth, and among other things, the city auditors will be here to discuss the twenty twenty-four financial audit.
Thank you, Mr. Roby. Anybody have any questions regarding this report? Very good. With that said, that'll take us into the regular agenda. First item for resolution R twenty twenty-five, death zero three, design church utility project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. He seemed to know there's a large hole in the southern parking lot of Zion Church. And that is the end result of a failed storm sewer main. And I want to just spend a few minutes to walk council and the public through what has gotten us from the point of discussions through the large hole in the parking lot to where we are today. The city, along with Zion Church of Christ, have been discussing plans for replacement of utilities that run underneath the parking lot and the parking lot service itself for a number of years. This predates me by like three city administrators, I think. And about a year and a half ago, two years ago, there was a minor failure of the storm sewer itself. It began collapsing and is now effectively completely collapsed in the middle of parking lot, and that collapse then caused the lapse of the pavement and the grade above the storm sewer. The complete failure of that storm, storm sewer main and the associated needed replacement of sanitary sewer main that run alongside, was alongside the storm sewer main. Prioritize the project, not only for the church because they now had a large hole that was caused by city utilities, but also for us because we need those utilities to be repaired. So we ended up conversations with the church late last fall to discuss the scope and the timing of the project in anticipation of potentially doing a project as soon as twenty twenty-five, both wastewater and stormwater funds budget capital for this project in twenty twenty-five to cover the cost. So it is included in this year's budget. When plans were finalized, they were shared with church leadership and bids were received and opened. You did receive eleven bids. It's a very successful bid opening for us for this project. Rombling excavating of the mancato areas, the apparent low bidder, the total bid is approximately twenty-two percent below the engineers estimate for the project. The asphalt replacement of the parking lot itself was included in the bids. We had a conversation early on with the church about whether they wanted to do the asphalt separately on their own, and the city would be responsible for only the asphalt that's above the utility that would be an easement because if you disturb an easement, utility work, you actually go back in and fix the surface. So we asked the church, do you want to just do the rest of the parking lot yourselves? And they requested that we bid the entire project as part of it. And then we would carve out their section, the church's section, from cost standpoint, and the church would pay just for that. So the bid package does include everything, all the, all the removals, all the utility removals, utility replacements, and asphalt replacement for the entire construction area. The city council awarded contract tonight. Construction would begin promptly. We'd like to name for, we'll have a pre-construction meeting with the contractor and the church on Wednesday and begin mobilizing equipment later this week. And for those who are interested in the summer festival, Zion UCC is hosting on July twenty-third. That would be factored into the construction.
I have a question.
Yes.
So they wanted the cost, you just, be put into one. Do we know how much their cost is?
We do, yes. We know what their cost is. It's estimated right now at about ninety-six thousand dollars of the total project cost.
The rest of the three hundred?
Be city cost. Water, wastewater and storm sewer cost. So just for some history, and like, why does, why does the city have major utility mains running through private property, which is not a best practice and not something that we'd like to have? The reason goes, goes way, way back to prior to the development of this area. If you go back and look at some of the early sandborne maps, you'll see that the Zion Church sitting in the middle of a large swale, some old area photos will show that this entire area was wet from Zion Church all the way up to the community center. And that's where our storm water travels right now, kind of a natural low spot in that area. When the storm water system was put in to connect the southwest corner of town to the northeast section of town, the storm sewer was put in to connect Joeyville Anderson Park to the community center, and the route they followed was in between some backyards between Sixth and Seventh Street. You can see the orange line on your screen from Joe Eagle all the way across through the Zion Church parking lot, out on the Elmo Street, and then bearing slightly northeast to the large swale that carries our storm water overland underneath Ferry Street further to the north, past the community center, and out into La Salle Creek. So the watershed that this stormwater pipe, the stormwater main that's sitting underneath Zion Church serves is approximately forty-four acres, so it's a sizable sizable volume of water that is carried through here. And it would be possible, engineering wise, to circumvent the entire church itself, but it would increase the cost of the project significantly. We'd likely have to put in some kind of lift station to move the water or re-engineer Ryestorf Smith Streets to try to bring the water downtown into infrastructure that doesn't exist yet. So when the failure was imminent, one of the first conversations we had with the church was would they be willing to continue to host city utilities underneath their parking lot in permanent easement, and she was yes, that they had done so for today, and they would be comfortable doing so again. But that's in context for why the water runs underneath that parking lot, mostly because it has forever, and the infrastructure on either side is there to serve that right now until we can establish long-term through our stormwater master plan, which is being and we're in the process of doing that project right now. Is it possible that storm, storm water from the southern half of town could be rerouted directly down the hill into the river? Possible, but the infrastructure is not there yet. So that's what the stormwater infrastructure generally looks like right now. On the left side of your screen is where the current utilities are in the construction area. It's hard to see from right here. The orange is the storm sewer, the green is the sanitary sewer that runs from Seventh Street on the parking lot out to Elmwood. So part of the goal with this project was not only to fix what's broken, but try to optimize and minimize long-term disruption of the parking lot. So as you can see on the left-hand side, we have a northwest to southeast storm sewer line running from Seventh Street at the intersection of Ryestorf and Seventh. And a separate storm sewer line that's running from southwest to northeast, further down Seventh Street. On the right side, what we've done is we've taken the storm sewer line at Ryestorf and Seventh Street, brought it underneath Seventh Street within the right way down to a point of connection at the southwest corner of the parking lot, then from there will be brought across the parking lot. So easements for these and the vacations of the current easements will be brought forward to city council after the project is done. So one of the items we discussed with the church was we'd like to get easements in place as early as possible so that they know and we know where we can tread during these projects. But we also recognize that during the course of a project, if something needs to move six inches in one direction versus the direction during construction, that can then throw your easements out of whack. And so we'd rather not establish easements than have to fix them after the fact. So the general line for storm sewer and sewers that both generally run from the southwest corner of the parking lot. This area here, you didn't see my mouse. Let's see it. Through the parking lot and on Elmwood. I can certainly take any questions. Otherwise, the staff recommendations, a motion to adopt the resolution that would accept the bids and award the contract for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Roby. That was a pretty thorough presentation. Does anybody have any questions for our city administrator?
Yes, I do. Always have questions. So this has been ongoing for decades. And so that's, that's a low area. Does it, is it better to run it in a different area? Who owns the land around there that we wouldn't have to be on their property? Is here a better place to put a new sewer?
So it, the city doesn't own any of the property in there. It's all privately owned, so it's all either residential to the north or to the, just to the south of the church parking lot is a parcel that's owned by the church as well. It's, there used to be a home site just south of the church. And then that was sold to the church that tore its house down and kept the property. So it's all private property. So the ideal way to run utilities is underneath the road or underneath the sidewalk, hidden in the public right away, so you don't have to disturb it. I don't have a number for what it would cost to reroute the storm sewer to the north or to the south. But I would wager that it's well over a million dollars.
You have to go quite, quite a bit to the north and quite a bit to the south because all of that water that runs down off all this whole area in here almost has to go through that parking lot unless you're rebuilding it.
Yes. And if we reroute to the north, one of the additional challenges we would have is we've just, we've just reconstructed Ferry Street and Elmwood Street. And so this is non-disruptive to the work that the city did and the county did in the last five years, regenerating most roadways. Changing things to the north and the south inevitably involve installation of stormwater infrastructure on Elmwood Shore and possibly also on Ferry Street, which now only costs a lot more than this project, but would be involved potentially destruction of the road service itself, which is less than five years old.
It'd be nice to have the master plan in place, so I'm pretty sure we're not going to be redoing it again.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, so part of the engineering that we asked to be done with this project is for that forty-four acre watershed that I mentioned, to the southwest of the church is, as part of the storm water management plan and as part of our ten-year street utility improvements plan that council approved in November of twenty twenty-three, South Fifth, South Sixth and South Seventh Street are all due for surface repair. So the asphalt is shot on those streets. It needs to be repaired. The curb area needs to be repaired. The utilities, water and sanitary sewer need to be replaced. And so what we asked of this project is that at the point of the storm water entering on the west side of the property, that that be designed such that when we go back in, whether it's in two years or ten years, to redo the streets, fifth, sixth and seventh, that that water could still flow in. So it's engineered to be ready for the next project, so we don't have to come back and redo it.
Then the dirt's going downhill.
Very, and very, very minimal grade, because if you just stand, if you stood in the Zion Church parking lot and you stood on Ferry Street, you'd assume you're at the same elevation. But we have to get the water right now to go from Joeyville Anderson Park all the way past the fire hall by gravity.
Okay. Very good. If we can see those quotes again, let's go, Roby. So at this time, I'll ask for a motion to adopt resolution R twenty-five, death zero three, is presented. So moved. Thank you, councilmember Schleter.
Second.
Councilmember Nelson, thank you, seconded. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to item seven B, the final item for tonight is the expanded construction hours for review of road development. Mr. Roby, you're going to give us a presentation. At first, I'm going to ask that if anybody wants to speak to this subject at this time, we could start with Tammy Arnold. Welcome, Liz Arnold. And please keep in mind some of the expectations I wrote earlier. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. My name is Tammy Arnold. I live on the corner of Woodlawn and Distel at nine twenty-eight Quiglin Avenue. I'm here to discuss the proposed vote to permit the Ridge Road developers to begin work at seven A M. on weekends. I encourage the council to seek clarity on several key points before deciding. One is what is the rationale behind the request? And two, how long will this change apply? One month, two months throughout twenty twenty-five, including twenty twenty-six? That wasn't clear in the packet. Our backyard borders the development, and we value the ability to sleep in, keep the windows open without noise and beeping and banging and enjoying peaceful mornings outdoors on the weekends. So having that additional two hours of construction would disturb that. Given the lack of clear information, I respectfully request the council to vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Also, we have Paul Malcolm. You want to step up? Thank you, Paul. Welcome.
Thank you. As always, it's a pleasure. That's nice of you to say. My name is Paul Melko. I live at seven four five Ottawa Road. The majority of our property borders the entire west edge of the Ridge Road Development. We're about, oh, and I want to, want to comment on the proposed deviation of city code pertaining to noise violations and the extended hours allowed for working. We're about four weeks into the project now, and like I tell you from experience, after twelve consecutive hours of noise and ground vibration, personally, I'm ready to call it a day. On a pleasant summer evening, I'm sure many of you like to, when you're spending time in your backyard, enjoy the pleasant weather. Imagine doing that for the road, full-blown road construct or property construction in your backyard. I'm not sure why the property developer carries more weight than the quality of life for the, for the people of the sewer. Two million dollar tip deal seems to me enough of a concession. I don't see why we have to keep giving more and more. And it seems to me that the, the wrong parties are benefiting from this request. I hope you're given serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malcolm. Appreciate your input. Also, Ms. Arnold, thank you. With that, we will move into item seven B, the expanded hours for construction at Road Bridge. Mr. Roby, you want to give us a summary of this?
I would thank Chris Mayor. I think, Ms. Arnold, Mr. Malcolm for their sorry, my mic's not on. Hi, William, Mr. Mayor, first of all, thank you. And I want to thank Ms. Arnold, Mr. Malcolm for their for coming to me and sharing their thoughts. Section ninety-seven point oh five city code discusses specifically noise ordinances and of all kinds. And there's one specific section that doesn't come up too terribly often, except when we have major projects going on in and around town, which is section B three, which relates to construction activities. City code is clearly defined. Construction hours, when you're allowed to work operate heavy equipment between the hours of seven A M. and ten P M. on weekdays and nine A M. and nine P M. Weekends. The contractor here, in their early communication with the city team, requested extension for Saturday and Sunday from a nine A M. start to a seven A M. start. And while they have not expressed any immediate need, the request is, is based upon the potential for future weather disruptions. So if they, or supply disruptions, or any other disruption that might make it difficult for them to start work, they need to buy a couple of extra hours. They'd like to do it on Saturday or Sunday. I can presume that it's more expensive for them to operate on Saturday or Sunday, but the contractor does their math and figures out well, I need to pay some overtime to do this on the weekend, or I can wait to start on next Monday and keep the crew online for a couple of extra days in the project. They would like the option to be able to start a couple of hours early on Saturday and Sunday if they need to. For some context, city council has previously granted exceptions for construction hours. Most of these in residential areas, twenty nineteen, El Tap sidewalk project was granted at seven A M. a weekend start time. The twenty twenty, Casada twenty-two street utility project on Elmwood Ferry was effectively granted like an exception. There was some times when it was constructed.
There were some times when those construction were going on, we, 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 early morning hours. Took account for weather delays. The twenty twenty one water tower project on Kingsway was granted at seven AM start time. And then in twenty twenty two, the South Thirty Sixth Street Utility Project, which was portions of Ferry Bridge. And Selfmade Street was granted at seven AM start time on the weekends. So there's no formal application for this. This is the contractor reaching out and asking if they can have some more time. Whether they use it or not, we, we don't know. But let's see, their request has come forward that again, council has granted more other projects.
Thank you, Mr. Roby. Does anybody, any council members have questions? Yes.
This is the private development touch is done by the city. We're just inspecting everything. Do we know what impact this would have to the timeline of the project if we didn't grant it?
There's no impact, no, no immediate effect, no.
Councilmember Smith?
How long is this project supposed to take?
So they are supposed to reach material completion of the road and utility portion, which is everything but the houses. Majority of everything but the houses by the end of the construction season twenty twenty five.
Okay, so this would be like a blanket.
It wouldn't have to be. So any, just like any council motion, a council member could make a motion that this be, that it be. Eight fifteen AM for the next six Saturdays and Sundays and then not up. Or seven AM five until November fifteenth or. Because there's no, there's no, there are no specific timeframes called out in city code other than what is this. We've mentioned already, the city council could grant any exception, any varieties of exception or no exception.
My, my question was that the, so they didn't give you a timeframe? And then construction season could be when the ground freezes. So that's open ended as well. So it's possible to do a limited time. So for a month. You can give them a limited amount of time to increase these hours.
You could, yes. And well, from a, as, as a community member, when I prefer to see to have quiet weekends and. Have them not work on weekends, absolutely. I would prefer that. I would. Partly because we are inspecting all the work that's being done. So I'd rather not have to have staff come in. But I also understand their desire to get things done. And if we've seen on the other projects that city councils consider this on, there have been. Weather or supply problems that have not allowed them to work on a Wednesday, Thursday or Friday. Saturday morning at seven thirty is the first time they get, and get in. Without delaying the project further. That's what council has to decide.
So we don't know where they're at in their project right now. It's. Earth moving type stuff, sounds like.
Yeah, they can start utility work sometime, putting buried utilities sometime in the next week.
If that is noise. Productive. I, I don't know my difference between.
There are things that are a lot of the others, absolutely. Depending on what stage they're at and what day. Would they? That's a subjective question that I don't.
So what happens if they don't meet their construction and construction season deadline?
Then they have to go on to next year.
With their project. Does anything, does that have any negative impact on the city?
At some point in time, they could be. I would not recommend it, but we could consider that a default of a portion of the development agreement for not getting houses built. But yeah, that would be a stretch. Joe, just as a community, I would like to see it done sooner rather than later, just so that we can start putting houses up.
Just to be clear, Joe, this, this exception, this time we're looking at is for street utility construction. Is it necessarily housing?
Correct.
Okay.
It isn't housing, correct?
Correct. This is for street utility for this contractor, because once the street utility work is done, the. Home builders will have, be pulling individual permits on that. And it would be subject to all the individual building permit guidelines.
Anybody else? I'd like to make a proposal that we compromise here and to approve an eight AM start time extension of work hours. On Saturdays and Sundays for the street utility construction, the Ridge Road housing.
For a limited time?
As long as it takes to finish the project. The street, all street. That was, motion was made for an eight AM start time, the second by Councilmember Schlier. Any other discussion? Comments?
I'd like to see a timeline of it. Over many months, because yes, the weather's nice and the days are long right now. But by November, it's going to be dark then. So are they still going to work then or?
Well, we've had my motion, there's gone, I proposed a motion, the second by Councilmember Schlier. All those in favor?
I.
I. Two ayes. All those opposed? How many ayes? Five ayes. So with that said, we're going to have to stick with the nine five.
Nope, then this is another motion.
Was it a motion?
No, if there is.
Oh, if there is a motion, okay. I had the eight AM start. Any other motions? No other motions? So then the ordinance will stay as is? Okay, thank you. Moving on to reports and items of appreciation. As always, this is council members, this is an opportunity to share with the public what's going on. What's going on in the commissions. And we will start with Councilmember. That good, nothing? Councilmember Nelson.
Well, I did the Minnesota Valley Transit Meeting today and they approved their budget for the year. And we are working on, or I guess they are. Sitting pretty well cash wise. They have a good reserve and. What else was there with them? Their electric buses are put on hold for obvious reasons and. Which ladies are retiring? Tammy?
Really?
Exactly. They all start with us there. Yeah, so and one lady is retiring who's been doing wonderful jobs.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Moving on to Councilmember Schlier.
I was a member of a delegation that went to the Hocken Germany region in June. What was three to nine development and it was funded by McKnight Foundation. It was a very informative, worthwhile trip. And I will be sharing more detailed information in the near future. Highway one sixty nine corridor meeting was held on the tenth. I just wanted to report that. During the COVID area, here on dues were decreased to half price. It's going to be going back to full price here shortly. And also Scott County's term as the fiduciary agent for the coalition is ending. So they're looking for. A new fiduciary agent to handle finances for the group. Planning Commission met on the tenth. They had a training session on planned unit developments and anticipation of future projects. That are coming in front of the commission. They also started their planning for the October Future of the City Forum. So everyone can anticipate that the questionnaire is coming out shortly. I will be attending the county commissioners meeting tomorrow as Minna is going to be presenting every district seven. Tenure Capital Highway Improvement Plan. I want to see what the details are on that. And I'll also be attending the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Summer Conference next week.
Thank you, Mr. Player. Councilmember Smith?
Today I attended MRBT meeting and a finance meeting. I also attended the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference in Duluth a couple of weeks ago. I've also met with several residents about some issues that have popped up at the Ridge Road Development. And I would like to thank Pat Pop and Todd Owen for their prompt attention to those issues.
Thank you. Councilmember Sullivan. Nothing to like, Councilmember Weyers.
Went, attended the RPA meetings last week on the eighth. I have HRA meeting this Wednesday on the sixteenth. I want to compliment the firemen for their open house that they had this past weekend. They did a nice job and it seemed like it was pretty busy at the time. And also compliment the library and their different events that they've had. They really are reaching out to the community and some different events that are pretty well attended.
Thank you. I'd like to report other than a couple of things. I met with Dylan Feeny with the Baseball Association on Thursday, July thirty. He gave me a little tour of the ballpark over there before they started to work. Many of you have seen the work that started over there. I want to thank him for all the work he did. He, he raised quite a bit of money, most of this, almost all of it, almost all of it, with a little bit of help from the city. Is being financed through money that he's got either from private donations or commercial donations or foundations. So I applaud Dylan. He's done a fantastic job. I'm looking forward to seeing the ballpark when it's done. Lastly, I spent Saturday, I went over to the private department. They had kind of a public relations day with the hot dogs and treats for kids. It's a hot day. They had the hoses going. So it was, it was a wonderful event. With that, I have nothing else and I would entertain a motion to dismiss tonight's meeting. So, all those in favor?